Thanks for waiting, everyone. Welcome to the December 12, 2013 meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Please take a roll call. Mr. Vig.
Here.
Mr. Cars.
Here.
Mr. Ron.
Here.
Ms. Flood.
Here.
Ms. Iker. Mr. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Ms. Pickett.
Here.
Thank you. All right. First item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from May 9, 2013, September 12, 2013, October 10, 2013, and November 14, 2013. Are there any comments from board members on the minutes? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please?
I have a motion.
Thank you. Motion, Ms. Dole, seconded by Mr. Vig.
Correct.
Any objection? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is disclosures. Are there any disclosures for this evening?
I have disclosures.
Ms. Dole, go ahead.
I have disclosures with regard to 2013-131 and 2013-149. I will start with 2013-131 first. My firm, Davis Wright Tremaine, has provided legal services to Verizon Wireless in connection with the request before the Board. And although I have not personally provided any advice with respect to this property or the issues related to it, and I have not personally advised Verizon Wireless on other matters, Verizon will be speaking, I understand, and its interests align very closely with the interest of the applicant, Global Tower Partners, in this proceeding. Personally, I have private interest in my reputation with the partners in my firm and in working on matters that my firm handles for Verizon. I have a private and financial interest in becoming a partner myself one day. I do not think that these private and financial interests will vary directly and substantially with the Board's decision in this matter and expect that my private and financial interests will depend on factors beyond the Board's decision in this matter. However, if Verizon, represented by my firm, participates in this proceeding and will have the right to file an appeal, my actions as a board member will be subject to greater scrutiny by others in my firm. As a board member, I am obligated to place the public interest above any financial or private interest when taking official action, and I believe that my private and financial relationships and interests would make this difficult to do in this case. Do you want me to go on to the next disclosure or take up that one first?
All right. If I can have a motion from one of the board members directing Ms. Dole to participate? Moved, Mr. Vig, seconded by Mr. Cars, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Vig.
Yes, in the matter of Ms. Dole's disclosure in case 2013-131, I move that we direct her to participate.
Any discussion? All right. Any objections? Please vote. Oh, he did.
No, we moved to.
All right, thank you, everyone. After voting, there are six against and one abstaining. Ms. Dole, we would ask that you do not participate in case 2013-131 based on your disclosure.
Okay.
Are there any other disclosures?
I can give my disclosure on the other case. With regard to case 2013-149, the petitioner, the Anchorage School District. My employer has prior and ongoing work for the Anchorage School District. We have a matter identified as open in our records that involves an attorney in the Anchorage office providing his opinion as an expert of the Anchorage School District relating to the reasonableness of attorney's fees requested in litigation in an individual with Disabilities Education Act case. We also have a matter that identified as being closed in 2006. We've also represented clients who are adverse to the Anchorage School District, and that includes Verizon Wireless. The work relating to the Anchorage School District for Verizon Wireless likely involves either purchase or lease or other issues relating to cellphone towers where the Anchorage School District is an interested party. Records indicate work was done as recently as November of 2012. The matters are not closed at present. In 2012, we also represented a client who is seeking a subpoena for the Anchorage School District records relevant to a lawsuit. There's no ongoing dispute in that one, as far as I'm aware. And we have handled other matters for other clients where their interests were adverse to the interest of the Anchorage School District that are not ongoing at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Dole. I'd like to get a motion to request the member to participate, please. Mr. Cars, moved second, please. Mr. Ron, thank you. Mr. Cars, would you like to direct?
Yes, I move to direct Ms. Dole to participate in case 2013-149.
Thank you. Any discussion? Let's vote.
I believe Mr. Vig.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did have a question.
Ms. Dole, do you feel that your interests are of a nature that would enable you to be partial and objective in this case, then?
I believe I could decide the matter in accordance with the standards and requirements imposed upon the Board.
Thank you.
I also forgot to mention, to add, that I have not personally worked on any of the matters that I mentioned.
Thank you. Any more discussion, questions? Seeing none, let's vote, please. The motion passes. Six directing Ms. Dole to participate, one abstain and one absent. Are there any more disclosures for this evening? Go ahead. Yes, three.
Yeah, I have a couple. In regard to case 2013-131, viewing the packet, I'm a resident of the area in Eagle River where the service would be enhanced by the petitioner's antenna. I'm not a customer of Verizon, but I just thought I would disclose that I would be affected by it. I have no interest, financial or otherwise, in the outcome of the case.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there any questions? Any discussion regarding that disclosure? Seeing none, can I get a motion, please? Directing the member to participate. Thank you, Mr. Ron, seconded by Mr. Hart, thank you. Mr. Ron, would you like to direct the member to participate?
Thank you. Through the chair, I move to direct Board Member Vig to participate in case number 2013-131.
Thank you. Let's vote. The motion passes with one recused, one abstained, sorry, and five in approval of having Mr. Vig participate in case 2013-131. All right, any other disclosures for this evening?
I have one additional. With regard to case 2013-149, my firm, USKH, has provided services to the Anchorage School District over many years. I'm fairly sure we have ongoing contracts with them. We, in fact, pursued the project that's before our Board tonight. Were not successful, and another firm was chosen for that. Wanted to disclose that. I don't feel that these facts or that I have any financial interest in the outcome of this particular case, but I did disclose the similar facts when there was another variance for a different matter before the Board on this exact same site, and I just wanted to remind the Board members of that. And I think that covers it.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Vig, discussion? Seeing none, can I get a motion, please, in the positive? Thank you, Mr. Cars, seconded by Mr. Ron. If you'd please state the motion.
Yes, I move to direct Board Member Vig to participate in case 2013-149.
Thank you. Please vote. The motion motion's been approved. One abstain and six in the positive. So, Mr. Vig, if you would please participate in case 2013-149. All right, any other disclosures for this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to... There are no items for the consent agenda tonight. So, we're going to move on to the public hearing. Thank you, everyone, for being patient. Tonight, we'll have three variance requests. The order of business will be as follows. The Chair will introduce variance requests, and I'll have read into the record the case number and the name of the applicant. Staff will present a sufficiency of notice, and then the Board will rule on that sufficiency. Staff will then provide a brief presentation outlining the variance request. The Board and the applicant may then direct questions to staff through the Chair. Then the applicant will give their presentation with the burden of proof resting upon the applicant. The applicant will have 10 minutes to make their presentation. The Board must be convinced by preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. Upon the conclusion by the applicant, the Board and staff may direct members or questions to the applicant through the Chair. The hearing will then be open for public testimony. All persons testifying may be questioned by staff, the Board, or the applicant. Each person testifying will have three minutes. At the conclusion of the public testimony, staff followed by the applicant will be able to provide rebuttal testimony. The Chair will entertain a positive motion from the Board to grant the variance, which must be seconded. The Board will then develop oral findings and conclusions based on their decisions in the variance request. Every final decision of the Board will clearly state on its face that it is a final decision. Every decision made by this Board will be based on written findings of fact and conclusions which are supported by the recorded proceedings. The findings will be sufficient to provide reasonable basis for understanding the Board's decision, and the Board's findings will specifically address why the criteria has or has not been met. Staff will reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for later adoption by the Board. Any person that is aggrieved by the Board's decision may appeal that decision to the Superior Court within 30 days of the written notice being delivered to the applicant. With that, we'll move forward with the first case on the agenda. Case number is 2013, and the petitioner name is Global Tower Partners. Is the petitioner present?
Yes.
Will staff please present sufficiency of notice?
Madam Chair, my name's Jillann Ingless, and I work within the Community Development Department. Forty-one public notices were mailed on August 29, 2013, and then this case has been postponed twice. So, they were also published in the public notices on October 24, 2013, and again on November 21, 2013.
Are there any questions of staff? Seeing no questions, will the applicant please come forward and provide your presentation?
Oh, Madam Chair, I apologize. I thought you were going to discuss the sufficiency of notice.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My apologies.
That's okay.
I have to let you know that I have not been before this Board for many years, so I apologize for not giving you the staff presentation.
I'm new in this position as well.
So, anyway, this is case 2013-131. It's a different type of a variance case. It's for an existing Type II lattice tower located at 7550 Highland Road in Eagle River. The tower was initially constructed prior to the telecommunications code being enacted, and so it was constructed with a land use permit, and later a house was placed on the property. Generally, in the R-10 zoning district, a Type II lattice tower is not permitted. However, because of the zoning code under 2155-060, pre-existing towers can be actually replaced with the same type and height of tower. In this case, it's a 40-foot lattice tower, and Verizon would like to co-locate on the tower, which then increases the height of the tower up to approximately 55 feet. In residential districts, towers are permitted to be 65 feet in height with a potential of another 30 foot of co-location, depending on the number of co-locators. However, since this is a non-conforming tower, which would not normally be permitted on a lot with a residential house, it could be permitted on a lot with a non-residential use such as a church, we required that Verizon come forward to the Zoning Board for a variance, and this is the reason for the variance. It is a very steep slope. I don't know if you've visited the site, but we determined in the end that the department's standards, 1, 2, and 3, are not substantially met, and that the rest of them were substantially met. It's hard to put these towers and increase in the height of the tower in some of these standards, but it is an existing tower, and it can remain in its current location at 40 feet. The issue at hand really is that they can't... Co-locations are difficult because of the height of the tower. They need to increase the height in order to co-locate. The variance is self-imposed in that the tower can remain, like I just said, in its current location. Also, it doesn't create an exceptional hardship because the tower already exists, and it was built on a level part of the land. They leveled it out in order to be able to put it up. So, therefore, staff recommends that the tower height be denied, but if the Board determines that it should be approved, we suggest conditions 1 and 2 on page 6 of the staff packet. I also wanted to provide you some information in the packet. A picture of the tower is located on page 12. The survey... The type of tower is located on page 26. The survey is located on page 29, and the non-conforming determination is located on page 44. At this time, that's the end of my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions of staff regarding the sufficiency of notice? Mr. Ron?
Through the chair, just for clarification. I don't have questions on the sufficiency of notice. I do have questions on staff's presentation, so maybe I'm confused. I thought the sufficiency of notice had to do with the public notices as they're posted. Are my questions limited to that, or can I ask about the presentation that was just given?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, Ms. Ingless, you mentioned that the house was constructed after the tower. Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, it is correct, with a land use permit.
Okay. For my edification, can you talk to me just briefly about primary and accessory structures, and if there's any relation between time of construction on a parcel, or is it just specific to use that would define primary versus accessory structures in a residential zoning district?
Well, at the time that the house was constructed, because this property is owned R-10, actually, the tower was considered a principal use along with the house being another principal use. You could have multiple principal uses on the property, with the exception of you couldn't have multiple houses. But there was a legal opinion at the time, and it still is in place, that these are actually two principal uses on the lot, one being non-conforming.
Thank you.
Also, I don't know if you recall... I'm sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair. There's also information from the legal department that was emailed to you earlier this week and laid on the table today in regard to Rule 6409. Did you get that?
Is that the two-page memo from legal?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Ron, anything more? Okay. Mr. Vig.
Yes, Ms. Ingless, kind of following up on Mr. Ron's question in a different way, but is the type of tower, it being a Type II, one of the factors that resulted in its legal non-conforming status?
Well, it is non-conforming because it is a Type II in an R-10, but the reason why it was determined to be also non-conforming is because it's a tower on a lot with a residential house. You can only have towers... After the code changed, towers are not permitted on lots with houses. You can only have them on a non-residential use. So, there's two non-conforming issues here. The use of a Type II tower and the tower being on this particular lot.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, Ms. Ingless, you'd mentioned in your presentation the lots zoned R-10, and I'm trying to track down the size of the lot. Can you... Let me know what the lot size is. There we go. 10, thank you, on the front page, 10.
Lot is, yeah, 10... Through the chair, the lot is 10.7 acres, or 438,790 square feet. It's a rather large lot.
Thank you, yes. That was kind of where I was going. It seemed like it was a rather large lot, even though there is residential... It is residential, and there's a single-family home on it as well. I couldn't tell from the packet the adjacent property immediately east or closest to the lot line, closest to the tower. What's located on that lot? Are you aware?
You know, it was really dense vegetation, but when I looked at the site, it's more than 55 feet from the property line and 62.9 feet to the east and 94 feet to the south. Based on the information provided, it does not appear there's a home within the 200% fall-down distance of the 45-foot tower or 55-foot tower. It would need to be at least 110 feet away from a house, and we don't think that it's within that fall-down radius.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? Mr. Hart, go ahead.
I guess I just have a question. Does staff typically walk through the memo with us just to explain it? It's two pages, and I could read through it, but it might be more beneficial if they...
Okay. Let me pull that up. Just... My apologies, I'm looking for it. I placed it somewhere over here. Oh, here it is. That's right. I just added. Through the chair, the, the department requested based on a question at the last meeting, we wanted to know what does the impact of the newly enacted federal law, Section 6409, have on this particular co-location in denying a variance for a telecommunications tower? It, based on the legal department, 6409 requires municipalities to approve co-location requests.
Excuse me, could you speak into the microphone a little bit clearer? Thank you.
The brief answer under this is that 6409 requires municipalities to approve co-location requests unless the co-location request are, represents a substantial change in the physical dimensions of the tower. Actually, the phase, the phrase substantially change in physical dimension of the tower was not defined under the new legislation. So therefore, it's up for, it's up for discretion at this time until they, until they define I was expecting legal to come tonight, so my apologies. In short, the department, you know, since we don't have a definition of a substantial change in the tower, the department determined that the modification is a substantial change. And so, under the current law, substantial change in the physical dimensions is not defined, while the municipality must follow federal law approval, co-locations request, the municipalities entitled to adopt its own definition. Technically, our department has not adopted a definition. That's the short answer of the memo.
Thank you. Is there more discussion on this? All right. Seeing no additional questions, will the applicant please come forward and provide your presentation? When you speak into the mic, if you'd please give us your name and spell your last name. You've got ten minutes for your presentation.
I'm sorry, am I required to give my address?
No, you're not.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for having me tonight. So I just want to provide a little bit of background, and I have a short presentation. So this is an application for Global Tower Partners to increase an existing communications tower by fifteen feet to then allow for Verizon to place antennas on that extension. Verizon, up until two years ago, had no presence in Anchorage or Alaska. This is part of Verizon's attempt to bring a network to Anchorage. The reason why that's important is because this site, without it, leaves Verizon with a significant gap in their coverage abilities. This is a critical site for Verizon. Without it, they'll essentially will not be able to provide what they consider to be appropriate service to new customers. I'd like to talk about the, the code sections, the municipal code. The telecommunications section of the municipal code directs applicants towards co-location and states that you should try and co-locate prior to proposing any new structures. And that's exactly what we're proposing to do here. We're proposing to attach antennas to an existing tower and not build a new tower. The municipal code states that you're allowed to extend a communications tower for co-location in height by fifteen feet, which is what we're proposing to do. The municipal code also states that cell towers, communications towers in residential zones have a base height limit of sixty-five feet and then can be extended through co-location, as staff stated, up to ninety-five feet. We are only proposing to extend this tower to fifty-five feet, which is well below the municipal code height standard. The tower meets the setback standards, it meets the height standards, and per the code, co-location is the desired proposal. In fact, all jurisdictions request for cell tower providers to first try and co-locate. And to deny an application for co-location essentially flies in the face of not only this municipal code, but pretty much any code that you're going to come across. Again, Verizon has a significant gap in coverage without this location, and there are no alternative locations. There's no alternative locations for co-location, there's no alternative towers in that area, and there's no alternative locations for a new tower in the area. This is the only location in this area that Verizon can place antennas. I'd like to talk to you, I'd like to speak about the three points in the variance criteria that staff found that we did not meet. The first one, and I'm going to paraphrase this to stay within my timeframe, but the first one is, there's, exists an exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstance on the subject property, such as, but not limited to, streams, wetlands, slope, physical circumstances that are not applicable, applicable to other land in the same district. Okay, so this is a cell tower, communications tower, essentially on a mountaintop. It's very unique. It's the only tower that I, and I've worked on several Verizon locations in the area. It's the only tower of, of its nature like this. The, the access road to the tower is at a, close to about a forty percent slope, and it requires four-wheel drive to get to. The residential, you cannot even see the tower visually until you actually get to the site because of the slope of the access and the, the unique location of it. The home on the property can't see the tower from the home. The second variance criteria is because of these physical circumstances, the strict application of this code would create an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner and would derive, deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of the zoning ordinance. I would like to say, because this is a cell tower, I think it, it deserves a little bit more of a unique view with this criteria, and it should be compared to other cell towers in all of the municipality and not just this district because there's no other cell towers in the district. And it's an undue hardship because all other cell towers are allowed to co-location. Providers are allowed to attach antennas onto other towers. This tower has been, been denied that opportunity. The third criteria is that the hardship is not self-imposed and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and such conditions and circumstances do not merely constitute an inconvenience. The hardship is not self-imposed by the applicant. In your packets, you have a picture of the tower. This is the tower. There are two providers on the tower, one's at the top and one's down here. It's only a forty-foot, forty-five-foot tall tower. Verizon can't place antennas at the bottom of a tower. I mean, I don't have to be a, a, a cell tower engineer to tell you if they put antennas at the bottom, it's not going to do any good for anyone. It's just going to project out into the trees. So the, they have to extend it to, 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 to make a location to put the antennas. That hardship is not self-imposed. All towers are, are allowed to be increased again for the purpose of co-location. It's not Verizon's or, or Global Tower Partners' fault that they, that they're not being allowed to increase this top, tower to be, to be a usable structure. Kind of in close, I just, I want to reiterate the fact that all the basic code standards are met. Verizon has a significant coverage gap without this location. Without it, they're effectively being denied the ability to, to provide an accurate and, 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 and significant ability to service their, their customers. There's no alternative locations for this type of use in the area. It's going to, it provides this new service to the community, and without it, the community is being held back from, from having this opportunity. The, the community, the, the neighborhood association was presented the proposal, and they are in favor of it. And also, for safety reasons, a new service would help increase the safety of the area. And I have another representative here who would also like to speak with you if there's still enough time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
You've got two additional minutes. If you'd please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Yes, my name is Joseph Reese, last name R-E-E-C-E. I'm with Davis Wright Germaine and here on behalf of Verizon Wireless. I'd like to speak to the 6409-A question. The, the question is, what is, how do you define a substantial change in the physical dimensions of the tower? We're fortunate, in this case, to have guidance from the FCC, a written interpretive guidance that the FCC has developed that provides a definition of substantial change. It's, as municipal attorney has pointed out, it's not a rulemaking yet. It's not been done as a regulation or a rulemaking, but it is a published interpretive guidance that the FCC follows. The FCC is an agency charged with applying and enforcing things like wireless telecommunications. They have the expertise, they have the ability to, the background and the expertise to, to interpret the law. And courts, when a judge looks at, at a question like this, the judge says, "I'm not an expert in this area, but I rely on administrative agencies' expertise." They give a lot of deference to administrative agencies' expertise, not necessarily a rulemaking, but just the, the wisdom and the, and the experience that the agency brings. So the, the commission used very carefully developed guidelines that were used for national historic properties, cell towers on national historic properties, and said, "This is appropriate. These standards are appropriate to apply to 6409." The agency has said that that's appropriate, that's what they are using as their guidance, that's what a court would use as its guidance, and I respectfully submit that the, the board should follow that as well and use that as guidance in interpreting what is a substantial change.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. All right, does the board have any questions of the applicant? Mr. Cars, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, through the chair. Mr. Grodzin, you had indicated that the, the community council had voted in support of, of your proposal. Is, is there a resolution that's, that you're aware of? Typically, the, they'll, they'll pass a resolution that'll be included in our packet. I haven't...
Understood. They did not provide a resolution. I think, and I may be speaking out of line here, can we ask staff if they're aware of any response from the Neighborhood Association?
Staff, if you'd please address that.
Madam Chair, I'm unaware of anything from the community council. We did not receive a resolution or a phone call or anything.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that they didn't meet, it's just, we didn't get one.
Understood. And when, do you know, did you make that presentation, or do you know when that presentation was made to them?
I, I made a presentation remotely. My office is in, outside of Portland, Oregon. I contacted the chair of the Neighborhood Association. I, I submitted our site plans to them with an email correspondence. They held a meeting and discussed it. I don't have it with me at this time. I, I know they had some minutes that, that talked about them discussing, and then I followed up with them, and they could verbally kind of indicated that they had definitely no issues with the proposal. I don't want, I, I believe they're supportive of it. I don't want to put words in someone's mouth that's not here, but I, I was, got the feeling that they were definitely supportive of it, and I don't think there's been anything shown that they're in opposition, certainly.
Thank you.
Mr. Vig.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Grodzin. In your, in your supplemental comments that you wrote on November eleventh, and in your presentation, you mentioned a couple of times that there are no other locations for, for the tower. Is that, that true?
That's absolutely true. In fact, I mean, the, in the staff report is the zoning map, and so this is all residential zone, and there's no residential properties with a non-residential use, which would, that would be what you would need to, to propose a new tower in this area. And we've worked, we've been working on this project for almost three years, and that, that's the whole Verizon project, and we specifically have been looking in this area for over two years. And, and, and to that matter, even if there was a, a location for a new tower, you have to, you'd have to discount why you can't go on this tower, and I guess, I mean, staff would say that, why we couldn't, but it just seems like before you propose a new tower, you'd always would try and go on an existing tower.
And then, kind of following up on that, there's a letter that follows yours, written by Jeff Cully with Verizon.
Yes, sir.
And in his summary, he says that he would, "I would rather have a site that is closer to the users, but this location is the best solution." What other solutions are there? If, if there are no other tower locations, are there other technical solutions that are not really addressed in your presentation that...
Can you, I'm sorry, can you rephrase the beginning of what Jeff said there?
Okay, his final paragraph says, "I would rather have a site that is closer to the users, but this location is the best solution that we found that provides good coverage into this residential area of Eagle River."
Right, so he's not, there, there are no other solutions. He's, but he's saying he'd want a tower closer to the users because it's so rural and it's so remote. Like, he'd want one more down in the valley, maybe closer to the, the freeway or something like that, or, or maybe down more just off the mountain, but there, there, there isn't that opportunity, saying that the users are the, the customers and that, that there, there aren't alternate solutions.
And I realize you didn't write the letter, so I'm asking you to interpret something that's, that's difficult, but he didn't use the word "only," he used the word "best." So I, I was just wondering, are there other means to provide signal beside a fifty-five-foot cell tower?
There, there, there isn't. I mean, there isn't another way, and I, I think Jeff was just being polite by saying "best." I, I think that's just, just, I don't know how to explain that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just, now that I've got my voice back for a second, on page two of two of the municipal attorney's memo, down at the bottom is the footnote that provides the guidance for the, that Davis Wright and Germaine, I forgot the, the person's name, but was referring to. was referring to.
I've got page one of the memo. Where's the second page?
It should be, it was copied front to back, so when you look at the memo, at the start of the memo, the second page, down at the bottom in the footnote.
Got it, thank you.
I think the petitioner also referenced it in their rebuttal packet.
All right, Mr. Ron.
Thank you, through the chair. Mr. Grodson, thank you for your presentation. You spoke a little bit about hardship. While I respect your position in representing the business interests of Verizon, if you're to talk about the hardship of Verizon, then I'm also interested in the hardship of other business interests associated with the case. I don't want to go there just yet. Let's tie this back to the standards, and the hardship that I think I'm most interested in is that upon the property owner.
Mm-hmm.
So can you please speak to that hardship?
Absolutely. The hardship to the property owner is that when he, when Verizon's allowed to come onto this tower, Verizon also has to place ground equipment, and the ground lease for the area is with the property owner, and the property owner has the ability to garner lease rents or monies from additional use of that ground area. Now, every property owner that leases ground space to a cell tower has that ability, because they can allow for, you know, other providers can come on those towers, co-locate on them, expand the ground equipment, and so this property owner's not afforded that opportunity to host another provider essentially on their property. And then, above that, you have the tower company that owns the tower, who then leases space to Verizon, and now they're being, not afforded the ability to continue to, you know, use this structure that they built for this business purpose, essentially. So that's the hardship to the property owner, the hardship to the tower owner, and then on top of that, Verizon is not being allowed to service an area.
Thank you for the response to the question about hardship to the property owner. I see this as a veritable barrier to entry for Verizon. Clearly, there's interest in expanding your coverage in this area, but if we're to talk about hardship to Verizon, I think we should also consider hardship upon the other providers that are currently taking advantage of that existing location. So, I don't think I have a question to add there, but just wanted to put that out for the record. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Mr. Hart, would you like to address the applicant?
I'm not sure if this is really a question for the applicant or if it's for staff, to be honest. It has to do with the memo again. I was, it said in the site, it says, "Or by the height of one additional antenna array with separation from the nearest existing antenna not to exceed 20 feet." I guess I'm looking for, what's the typical size of an antenna array? What's the typical height of an antenna array? I guess I don't quite understand what an antenna array is, so.
Well, antennas can vary, and I think what the criteria there is speaking to that is not so, an array, let's picture a tower, the array is the antennas around the tower, a single mount. I think what that's talking about, and it's talking about the whole array, but what it's really speaking to is that carriers are required to have separation between the top of one antenna and the bottom of somebody else's antenna, because if you don't, you have a certain amount of interference. And so, when you extend a tower, you can't have the, you know, you hang the antennas on the tower, you can't have them overlapping the other antennas, so you have to extend it enough to make up for the distance required between the bottom and top of the antennas. And that's what that's talking about, so you want to allow for that additional array to be extended enough to have that spacing above that existing one, so that there's no interference between the providers. And so that's that tip-to-tip, bottom tip, top tip, distance, separation distance. But antennas can vary, I mean, different carriers have different sized antennas, they can be anywhere from a foot, one foot tall, to seven feet tall.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? So, can you tell me once again what's the size of the antenna that the petitioner's trying to put on?
For these antennas? These are about five-foot antennas. Let me just, now I want to speak out of turn, but just, I mean, there's two things going on there. So Verizon's engineers determined the height needed to provide their coverage, and in addition to that, you also have to make up for the separation distance between the top and the bottom of the antennas, so there, it's two factors going on in determining that the height that they're requesting.
Mr. Hart, do you have any other follow-up? No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Any other questions to the applicant? All right, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll open it up for public hearing. Is anyone interested in testifying in this matter? And if you are, please come forward. Since there's no public hearing, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Is there any rebuttal testimony from staff?
Madam Chair, we have no other comments.
I'm sorry, the antennas are nine feet. I was just looking at them. I just don't make that error.
If you could please come forward and make that on the record, state that for the record.
I apologize. Just went back and looking at the site plans, and to say that they're five-foot antennas is slightly inaccurate, so they're closer to nine-feet-tall antennas. The midsection of the antenna to the top is four feet, and then it's about four feet to the bottom, so eight to nine feet. Thanks.
All right, seeing no additional testimony, the matter lies with the board. Can I please get a motion? We have to motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Vig, thank you for seconding. Mr. Cars, go ahead and state the motion.
Yes, with respect to case number 2013-131, I move that we grant a request for a zoning variance per AMC 2155060 to allow a non-conforming tower in the R-10 residential Alpine slope district to increase in height, subject to conditions number one, staff recommendations one and two on page six of the staff packet.
Mr. Vig, you seconded. Would you please speak to the motion? I'm sorry.
I do second Mr. Cars' motion.
Mr. Cars, would you speak to your motion, please?
Sure. Yes, thank you. I intend to support the motion. I concur with staff's findings regarding standards four, five, six, and seven, that those are met. With respect to standard one, I do believe that that standard is met. This is an extremely large lot, over 10 acres, and as staff has presented, it's not within the fall-down radius, which would be a concern of mine. And then, I go back to one of the previous board members' questions was, you know, where's the harm in this? I'm paraphrasing his question in the past, but we've heard from the applicant, and I review on the topography, it appears to me that no one can see this increase in height, and it's negligible, the effect of raising that height is negligible to the adjacent property as well. So I do believe that standard is met. With regard to standard number two, the strict application would not allow co-location, and while I, I'm not sure I completely agree with legal departments' discussions, I do give it merit that we should consider co-location. I have a hard time, I haven't read through the section 6409, but my, the hair on the back of my net rustles when I see something from the FCC that says, requires municipalities, I think unfunded mandates and whatnot, so that's just an editorial comment. But I do believe that standard two is met. This is also an odd situation. This is the only tower that's in a residential district, and it did have legal non-conforming rights at the time that the tower was constructed, and by not allowing the increase in height, we're not allowing the co-location. I do also believe that standard three is met. If, another way of looking at it is if the height of the tower were 80, or 55 feet at the time that it was constructed, there's room to put this additional antenna array on, and there'd be no requirement for the variance. So I do feel that all seven standards are met and intend to support the motion. I am interested in hearing some of the other staff, or some of the other board comments as well, though.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. I'm going to go back to Mr. Vig. Are there any comments to address the motion?
Yes, I'd like to comment on the findings for standard number one, as Mr. Cars mentioned. The fact that this particular site is over 10 acres, and the minimum defined by R-10 zoning is from a half an acre up to seven and a half, depending on the slope, so this particular lot is a third again as large as the minimum, depending on the slope of the lot. So I find that that's an exceptionally large lot. So I believe standard one is met. Standard number two, I think Mr. Reese did a good job of explaining to me, despite the position of the municipality, that during this rulemaking phase, that even, FCC's opinion carries a lot of weight in these matters, and they are the subject matter experts in regard to that, and so I believe that strict application of the code in this case would create an undue hardship on the property owner. I believe that standard is met. Standard number three, as Mr. Cars mentioned, had this tower been built at a 55-foot elevation or, you know, height, I should say, in its original construction, that they would be allowed to attach this array to it, and so I believe that it's not a self-imposed hardship, and therefore, standard three is met. I agree with staff's findings on standards four, five, six, and seven, that they are met, and I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there any other board members that would like to address the motion? Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm struggling with the motion. I appreciate comments from board member, board members Cars and Vig on standards one through three. I'm interested in eliciting some discussion amongst the board about the issue of the grand, excuse me, the non-conforming rights that the tower has. In essence, our action by the board for to approve this variance request is to modify something that has legal non-conforming rights, in a situation where a zoning district has been built around something that was existing previously, and in my view is perhaps contrary to the intent of the zoning district. That's why there are no other areas within the zoning district that have a cell tower on them. I don't know how to take that discussion into an application of the standards, but again, I'd be open to anybody that might be able to put my mind at ease there.
Is there anyone that would like to address that? Go ahead.
I'm not sure I'll be able to put Mr. Ron's mind at ease. Appreciate the comment. This board is, we hear a lot of difficult cases, and we have to find that seven standards, all seven standards are substantially met in order to grant a variance. And I understand, well, I believe I understand your comment with respect to this being a non-conforming situation. The size of the lot is a fairly significant issue, and I hadn't thought about it until Mr. Vig had brought it up. Theoretically, the lot could be re-subdivided and still meet the R-10 zoning district requirements for lot size. So that is part of, I guess I hadn't gotten all the way there when I made my motion and discussion, but after hearing Mr. Vig's comment, it kind of triggered that in mind, that if we were looking at a half-acre lot with a residential house immediately adjacent to this on the other side, or on the adjacent lot, I would probably look at this variance request a little different. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
I don't think this lot could be subdivided, because it's so deeply sloped, and the size of the lot has to do with the slope itself. So if you needed two 7.5-acre lots, you couldn't subdivide it. I don't know if there's a flatter area on it that would allow it to be less than that 7.5 acre, so. 7.5 acre. I too thought that that might be a solution, to subdivide the lot so it didn't have a house on it. I don't see that that, without any more information, I don't see that that's a solution.
And through the chair, I guess the point, understood it was going back to the size of the lot, that this isn't, it's not a small R10 lot. We are topographically challenged.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Does anyone else want to contribute to that thought? I'm sitting here pondering it myself, actually. Ms. Inglis?
Madam Chair, in regard to the non-conforming, actually, if the property owner or global towers wanted to replace this tower, they could, with the same height and type of tower. The property is zone R10, and when you, I visited the property, and it is straight up the mountain. There's a lot of, it's just steep all the way up. I didn't see the tower. It took me a while to find the tower, and I had to go up that driveway, and I wouldn't try to even accomplish it today if I had to. I don't think the property could be subdivided, but, you know, without having a proposal in front of me, I can't fully determine that. In regard to an earlier question that came up, if they attempted to subdivide the property, then it would call into question the tower itself. Let me just look at it real quick, please. Mr. Ron, I need to correct something that I said earlier with regard to two principal uses. Currently, the code requires with a permitted non-residential use, a secondary subordinate use, as specified in supplementary district regulations. So technically, a tower can't exist on that lot without another non-residential use. So subdividing it, even if it could be subdivided, would be problematic in regard to the tower. We would have to, we would, in that process, probably require that the tower come into compliance or be removed, if they subdivided.
Can I follow up, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Ms. Inglis, could you give examples of what would be required to bring the tower into compliance?
Oh, I meant to say it would likely have to be removed, or they would have to put a non-residential use on the lot, such as a church, or one of these other uses that are permitted in the district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Inglis. Any other discussion? Mr. Ron, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board member Cars, I appreciate your comments and reflection upon the size of the lot. You opened your statements about, I believe it was board member Marsh's historical comments, where is the harm? And while I do see some potential for harm in terms of competitive business interest, I don't think that's under this board's purview to make our decision upon. That said, applying your question about harm to the tower itself, I find this to be an area that has been cut aside, set aside for the tower, and should be taken advantage of as such. I do agree with you in that standards one, two, and three are met. I do intend to support the motion, and I appreciate the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Hart, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The discussion has been helpful, and I think specifically, I was having heartburn related to finding one, but previous board members have relieved that heartburn, and I believe all seven standards are met, and I intend to support the motion.
Thank you. Any other final comments by the board? Seeing none, please vote. Ms. Dole has recused herself, and there are six approvals in support of the motion. Mr. Grodson, the request has been granted. The decision of the board is final. You'll receive a written finding from the staff, and within 30 days of receiving the finding, if you feel aggrieved by the decision of the board, you can appeal that decision to the Superior Court. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Get my papers sorted out here. All right. Thank you for your patience. The second case before us tonight is case number 2013149. The applicant is the Anchorage School District. Welcome back, Ms. Dole. Is the petitioner present? Thank you. Will staff please present their sufficiency of notice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There were 62 public hearing notices mailed on October 24th. We received two comments, one, a letter of non-objection from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, and then a comment from the public. Shelley, make my presentation?
Please.
This is a variance to allow the relocation of two 30-foot light poles and the addition of one new 30-foot light pole in the GIP district. As the board members will recall, the Girdwood School was before the board this past summer. They were requesting a variance to increase the height of the gymnasium, and they are back for the said variance. Regarding standard number one, the standard is not substantially met. There are no exceptional physical circumstances that impel a need for increased mounting height. The submittal notes that switching to 14-foot poles would increase the size of the parking lot by requiring more islands. Due to the tight site, this expanded parking would impact adjacent natural vegetation wetlands or the limited playground area. This is not necessarily the case. The lighting poles are not required to be placed in planting islands. The light poles can be mounted on concrete pedestals rather than in islands, and thus not increase the parking area. Standard two, the standard is not substantially met. There are no physical circumstances of the property that would deprive the school district of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the GIP district. Standard three, it also is not substantially met. The standard speaks, no, sorry. The petitioner has stated that the lighting mounting height of 30 feet is necessary to provide consistency in appearance and performance. This variance request appears to be largely a matter of cost, which is a self-imposed pecuniary hardship or inconvenience. The submittal notes that redesign of all site lighting for 14-foot light poles would increase site development costs significantly and further erode the school district's ability to meet the educational needs of the school. Standard four is also not, is substantially met. If granted, the variance would not have an adverse effect on adjacent properties. The school is isolated at the end of High Tower Road, and is also surrounded by areas of native vegetation. Standard five, the standard is substantially met. The requested variance to allow a lighting mounting height of 20 feet, sorry, 30 feet, would not change the character of the zoning district nor permit a use not permitted in the district. Standard six is substantially met. No adverse health, safety, or community welfare issues have been identified. And seven, the standard is not substantially met. The petitioner's submittal indicates that the variance would allow all fixtures to be mounted at the same height, providing similar lighting levels throughout the site. Otherwise, lighting at two different heights would be aesthetically awkward and create uneven lighting levels. However, the six existing lighting poles could be removed and replaced with 14-foot lighting poles. If, after the public hearing, the board finds all seven of the standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to three conditions shown on page six of the
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions for staff? Mr. Cars?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, Ms. Ferguson, the, just to be clear, per the 2109 citation, the maximum height of pole, the poles per this zoning is 14 feet. Is that correct? The school zoning?
Yeah, yes. Through the chair, Mr. Cars, you're referring to the GIP district?
Yes.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. And I didn't notice in the packet, what, do we know how many poles that would hit? And this might be a question for the applicant, but what number of poles would be required of 14-foot height to provide the necessary lighting for the parking lot?
Commissioner Cars, again, that would be a question, that would be a question for the petitioner. I haven't done that sort of analysis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Mr. Ron, did you?
Thank you. Through the chair, Ms. Ferguson. If I remember correctly, the last time we heard a case on the Girdwood School, there was discussion about floodplain potentially affecting the lot. Do you have any information that might corroborate whether or not the lot is within the floodplain or adjacent to? And if so, would that be something that the board perhaps should consider as a physical circumstance of the lot?
Through the chair, Mr. Ron, there is a comment from Watershed Management Services. They don't make reference to floodplain issue there. So I can't think that if they do have a floodplain issue, it would be much more adjacent to the stream than way up in the parking lot area. I don't believe it would extend that far.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Dole.
Could you please provide the, I guess, staff perspective of, there's two 30-foot light poles that would be relocated, but they're already there, and is there any difference between the two that are already there that would just be moved versus the one that would be built that's not existing? Or why that doesn't make a difference?
I'm not sure what you're getting at. Could you rephrase it?
Just looking at the packet, it's a variance to allow the relocation of two 30-foot light poles and the addition of one new 30-foot light pole. Although, I gather there's a fourth light pole that would be remaining in place, but still needs, but may still need to be included in a letter of non-conforming determination if it was to, or, sorry, there are four additional lighting poles that would be remaining in place. There's two that would be relocated, and one new one that would be built. And the variance is for moving the two, moving two of them and adding one of them. And my question is whether there's any distinguishing, any distinctions that are made for relocating two poles that are already 30 feet in height versus adding a complete new one.
Ms. Dole, to relocate the two existing poles and to have the other remain, the petitioner does, would need to obtain a letter of non-conforming determination for those lighting poles.
For the four?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing no additional questions, will the applicant please come forward and provide When you speak into the mic, if you would give your name, spell your last name, please.
Thank you. I'm Michael Carlson. I'm with McCool Carlson Green Architects. And also here tonight is Calvin Munt with the School District, our project manager. And if we could, I'd like to see if we could fire up Elmo, so I could show you the plans. Do I need to push any more buttons here? No, I guess not. Will you understand the basics of it? Let me just run through the graphics so we get a kind of common picture. The four light poles that are to remain are here, 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 and here in yellow. Yellow on my sheet, you can't really do colors up there. These two poles are the ones we're proposing to relocate. And then, because we're actually changing the lighting fixtures on the poles, they have a little different optic characteristics. They're more focused in terms of the light, and they're LED lights, few less lumens. We're needing to add one more pole, and so this is the pole that will be added. All the poles on the existing side are 30 feet, and what we're asking you to approve is for us to be able to relocate those two poles and add one more of the same height. Now, to respond to the staff's comments about impacts to the buffer to Tiny Creek, we do disagree with them. There will be some impact. We do agree that, and this is not a final design, but this is a conceptual design I worked with, with the electrical engineers, of how we would address the issue if the variance is not approved. The yellow poles, again, are the 30-foot poles that remain in place, and then the pink, these are the new 14-foot poles. Because they have less spread, we have to have quite a few more poles to make the, to get the lighting levels that Title 21 requires. And it does require us to put poles in the center of the parking lot, and since those will be subject to snowplow damage, we'll need to put them on at least a 24-inch concrete base, and probably create a median there so that snowplows have less opportunity to damage those bases. So the parking lot actually does expand. So the parking lot actually does expand a couple of feet in this direction. And by translation, it will have a slight impact on the buffer to Tiny Creek. Tiny Creek runs through here, and so we'll need to push that out a little bit. The exact profile of that is only approximate here, but it will have some, some impact to Tiny Creek. In addition, it'll have some impact, obviously, to the snow removal operation. And with these center islands, the long-term durability and, and appearance of those items that are in the middle of the parking lot tends to suffer. So we're here primarily tonight to ask for this variance because we believe it's really the best solution for not only the school district, but the community and, and the municipality. Number one, it reduce, it's more sustainable. It reduces waste on construction. We've got two poles that will either go to the landfill or to the recycle center if this variance isn't approved. And we can avoid that by, by reusing those light poles. They're perfectly serviceable. They match the existing poles. It'll reduce the energy consumption. With more light fixtures on the site, it will require more wattage to create the same lighting levels. So it's a long-term operational cost for the school district and the municipality. It'll reduce maintenance costs. I talked about the snow plowing. It's going to complicate the snow plowing, and it's going to put wear and tear on those center islands that will require repair and maintenance down the road. We believe it's a superior aesthetic solution, as we mentioned in our narrative, to have all the poles at a single height rather than have a mix of higher and lower poles within the site. Considering that the provision in the special requirements is essentially an aesthetic requirement, to go to 14 feet, it seems to look kind of contrary to create a solution that's less aesthetically appealing by complying with it. The, as, as mentioned, it doesn't have any significant effect to the surrounding properties. We're actually improving the lighting there, and it doesn't really change, it doesn't change the existing lighting levels of the site or the impact of the lighting on the site. And finally, we had a couple of meetings down in Girdwood. We met with the land use committee, and then we met with the board of supervisors, and both boards approved this unanimously. So the communities behind this idea, they understand that this is a better solution. It's better for them, and it's better for the school. So if you, that's, that's why we're here. Now I'll address the staff comments or the standards that you have to evaluate us on. The, one of the main points that I disagree with staff on is that there, I believe that the built parts of the site, particularly those side, parts of the site that were built before the implementation of the standards themselves, can be considered by this board as a physical circumstance of the site. Standard one has the language, but, but not limited to, which seems to give you some broad ability to consider other conditions than are specifically mentioned in standard one. The board often does consider built environment, built facilities. Two that I was involved with are the sports arena variance for parking, where you consider the position of the roads, position of existing parking, all factors in terms of granting that variance. And then for Girdwood, the height variance, which the existing circumstance there was the, the height of the existing school and the configuration, location on the site. So you've definitely done it before. And this is a, all these improvements we're talking about were put in place prior to adoption of these standards. So I think it's perfectly appropriate to consider them as part of the physical circumstance of the site. The, and I already meant, kind of walked you through the impacts of Tiny Creek. Not a huge impact to Tiny Creek, but it will erode some of that landscape buffer unnecessarily. And then this variance really doesn't give ASD any special privileges. It's really just allowing them to develop the site in a responsible way, an efficient way, and be environmentally sensitive to the, not only to the site, but also to the community. And the undue hardship issue, we believe there is an unnecessary and undue hardship. It shifts funds away from other parts of the project, educational, educational parts of the project, maybe site benches. We don't know what the impacts would be, but it would take money away. We have a fixed budget, so the money would come, that would go into this lighting change would come out of other aspects of the project that are needed by the community. There, it would increase maintenance costs, both in snow plowing and long-term energy consumption. It's going to reduce the vegetation buffer along Tiny Creek. And it'll create aesthetically inferior design. It's for all these reasons the community's kind of behind this issue. So I think there's good justification for you to consider that we do comply with standards one, two, and three. And with regard to standard seven, if you're following me so far, with the 30-foot light poles, we're only adding one new light pole to the site. And we can't add a half a new site, light pole to the site. So I would consider that to be a minimum required to make this whole thing work. So I do have some copies. Unfortunately, I didn't expect quite so robust a turnout, so I only have seven copies of these comments, but I can pass them out.
Please come forward.
Okay.
Ms. Ferguson, do you have a copy of this that we can put in the file? This will become part of the record.
Could you tell me what it is? In answer to your question, no, I, I don't have a copy of this.
Mr. Carlson, you have one minute remaining.
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. Does the board have any questions of the applicant? Ms. McKay.
Through the chair. So according to the picture that you handed out, you'd need like 18, 14-foot poles in addition to the ones that are already there, or?
Yeah, that's a preliminary estimate, but that's, that's approximately what we expect to happen. We haven't done a complete final design on that, but I, I did work with our electrical engineer in doing this layout, and you can see just by the nature of the sketch, it's not a, a final design. But that's our estimation, is it would be about 18 poles instead of the one, well, relocating two and, and adding the one new.
So that's in addition to the, the ones that are there? You would need that?
The four, yeah. We keep the, we would keep the four.
Ms. McKay, can you speak into the mic, please?
Yes. We would keep the four existing poles. Can I add approximately 18?
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Vick.
Thank you. And Mr. Carlson, one of the three recommendations, should we approve their variance request, that the park stipulates parking lot lighting shall have full cutoff fixtures? And can you tell us, does the proposal to relocate two poles and install one new, consider full cutoff?
We're, we're, we're actually going to replace all of the fixtures on the existing poles so that we have, and we're going to go to LED lighting for a lot of the reasons you guys probably already know, you know, better energy performance, better color. So we're asking for the poles to be reused, but we're going to provide all new lighting fixtures. They'll have the contemporary cutoff, so we'll control the spillover.
And, and so they will be full cutoff?
Yes.
Okay. And then second question, do students walk to this school along, is it Hightower Road? I guess is the name of the street.
There's, there's some that do, yeah.
And is that road lit?
Part of it is. I'm, I'm not sure if it's lit all the way into the site or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vick. Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I, I wanted to speak to Mr. Carlson's comment earlier about the location of, and proximity of Tiny Creek and the parking lot. On the drawing, Mr. Carlson, could you put your drawing up once again, please?
You actually have my drawing.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Yes, I wanted to draw the board members' attention to page seven of the packet, which is an aerial photo, and it shows Tiny Creek located much further away than is indicated on the drawing. Again, you know, in questioning the floodplain and its, you know, flood potential on that parking area.
Yes, I don't, I, I agree with staff that this area is not, it's high enough, it's not going to be affected by the floodplain of those creeks. We don't, we don't believe that it is, no. The, the point I was making was that we would just be decreasing the vegetative buffer that separates the parking lot from the drainage area for the creek.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Mr. Ron, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Carlson, you mentioned a result of the shorter lighting would be an expanded paved parking area. Do you have any idea, estimate how much larger the parking area would need to be and what additional drainage may be created by that added asphalt?
Yeah, this, this drawing actually reflects that expansion, and we expected, just by translation, we've got to add a couple of feet to the width of the parking lot because of the island, so it's probably going to expand a couple of feet, maybe a little bit more than that. So that's, that's the kind of expansion, that's the expansion we would expect, a fairly nominal expansion, but with some impact.
Anything else, Mr. Ron?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from board members? Go ahead, Mr. Cars.
Yes, Mr. Carlson, what's, what is the reason for needing to replace any of the existing poles? Is this a, what's getting us to this point here?
Yeah, why we're doing it. Actually, we're doing it because the, with the addition of the school, the addition, let me shift this over here. The, we're actually doubling the size of the school, and this area is being added, so it does impact the existing bus loop, and we've, we're reconfiguring the parking lot. So with the reconfiguration of the parking lot, some of those light poles are, are in the middle of drive lanes, they're just in the wrong place. So there's four of them that are in the right place, but there's two of them that, that are in the way and just need to be shifted in order to accommodate the new layout.
Thank you.
Mr. Ron, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Carlson, you talked about the impact on snow removal and maintenance. Is there anything related to safety and transit through the parking lot, either through maintenance operations or daily operations associated with having shorter light poles that are not within an island? Anything you could speak to in terms of parking lot safety and location of those light poles?
Well, I appreciate the leading question, but my brain's not really working that way right now, so I really couldn't make a compelling case for you. Maybe you could help me out.
Perhaps I will in my, in my comments there. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll open this up for public hearing. Is there anyone interested in testifying in this matter? If so, please come forward. All right, doesn't look like we have anyone, so we'll close the public hearing now. Is there any additional testimony from staff?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the board? All right, seeing none, can I get a positive motion, please? Thank you for moving the motion, Mr. Ron, and for seconding Mr. Vick. Mr. Ron, if you'd like to address your motion.
Thank you. Through the chair, in case number 2013-149, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 21.09.070G.2.2B to allow the relocation of two 30-foot light poles and the addition of one new 30-foot light pole in the GIP district in accordance with Division Recommendations, numbers one through three on page six of tonight's staff packet.
If you'd like to speak to your motion, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Starting at the top, I do find that standard number one is met for the reasons as indicated by the petitioner regarding the potential negative impact to the buffer associated with Tiny Creek. Although staff did call to question the exact distance between the creek bed and, and the parking lot, I do find that that is a physical circumstance that has constrained the location of the lot and weighs in on my finding of standard number one being at least, at least met. Carrying that forward to standard number two, I find that standard number two is met as well, and that the strict application of the code would create an undue hardship upon the, the school in this sense. And the physical circumstances as discussed come into play there as well. Regarding standard number three, I agree that the hardship is not self-imposed, and the actions of granting the variance would be in, in, in keeping with finding that standard number three is met. The conditions do not merely constitute an inconvenience, and appreciate the petitioner's interest in working with the site to minimize impacts to, to the lot and surrounding environment. I agree with staff on standards number four, five, and six. I did, for the record, raise the question about safety, as I have been the victim of light poles in parking lots, and we can talk more about that offline. Regarding standard number seven, I disagree with staff and find that the standard is met for reasons such that the 30-foot light poles will enable the reuse of existing materials and minimize physical impact and footprint. And for those reasons, think that it is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. That said, I intend to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ron.
I'll speak to the-
Mr. Vick, if you could please address your motion. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. I, I find that, that the petitioner made a compelling case for standard number one being substantially met with regard to the expand, the need to expand the parking area in terms of proximity to, to streams, as Mr. Ron mentioned, and considering modifications to drainage systems and so on, that I believe, allow me to be, to be, to state that standard number one is substantially met. Standard number two, strict application of this code would create an exceptional or undue hardship. undue hardship on the property owner for many of the same reasons, and I think the petitioner's presentation of the layout of a 14-foot tall pole creates a, an exceptional or undue hardship on the property owner to create room and install 18 new poles and provide additional power to those, and so I find standard number two is substantially met. Standard number three, as the petitioner mentioned, these poles that exist were installed prior to these restrictions being adopted, and the requested modifications I find are very minor and not from an action of the applicant, and so I find standard number three is substantially met. I agree with staff on standards four, five, and six, and standard seven, I believe, is the minimum variance, making possible a reasonable use of the land for the reasons Mr. Ron mentioned, and I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there any other board members that would like to speak to the motion? Ms. Dole, go ahead.
I, I'm not, Madam Chair, I'm not convinced I, and that standard seven is met, I believe. From everything I heard, it sounded like the school district could still make possible a reasonable use of the land. Only a minimal expansion would be required of the parking lot, and it was outside the floodplain of Tiny Creek, and I, looking at some of the other factors, I tend to agree with the planning, with planning. It looked to me like, looking at factor one, that there was, that the circumstances were not exceptional or extraordinary in, with regard to the removal of some vegetation that would lessen some of the buffer of vegetation between the parking lot and Tiny Creek. And I also agree with planning on factor three, in that it seemed to me that, that the, that it would not, that it would not be, that, that it wouldn't, the hardship was somewhat self-imposed if they had an option of putting in more lower light poles.
Thank you, Ms. Dole. Are there any other findings by members of the board? Seeing none, please vote. Oh, Mr. Hart, I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As it relates to the motion, I'm in agreement with Board Member Ron's comments on standard one and two. I'm in agreement with Board Member Vig on standard three. In agreement with staff on standards four through six, and also in agreement with Board Member Ron's comments on standard seven, as well as the petitioner, and I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Is there any other input from board, please? Seeing none, please vote. All right, thank you. The motion has been approved six to one. The variance has been granted, and as previously, the decision of the board is final. You'll receive a written finding from staff, and within 30 days of the finding, if you feel agreed by the decision of the board, you can appeal that decision to the Superior Court. Thank you for your input and for taking time tonight. All right. Final case this evening is case number 2013-162. The applicant is Christine Keshverov. No, I apologize. The applicant is present, I hear? Thank you. All right, will staff please present sufficiency of notice?
Madam Chair, 58 public hearing notices were mailed. As of the writing of the case, and I've checked the case files, no return notices have been submitted either in favor or opposed to the variance request. However, the applicant did submit a letter of support from the neighbor adjoining the west petition site boundary, who was in support of the variance request.
Thank you. Any comments from the board regarding sufficiency of notice? If you'd please give your presentation.
This is a variance to allow an existing structure to encroach into the required five-foot side yard setback. The property is Lot 1, Lot 4 Love subdivision. It is developed with a single-family residential structure, as well as a shed that is about approximately 123 square feet. The applicant has done a very good job of outlining, it's a story of as-bilts that were not correct from the get-go. This, the structure was built in 1993, and there was an as-bilt that was done showing this to be in a conforming location on the lot. Since 1986, the municipality or building safety has required at the footing and foundation stage of construction that an as-bilt survey be submitted in order to verify that it is in conformance with all the required yard setbacks, lot coverage, et cetera. And an as-bilt survey was submitted, and it showed the structure in a conforming location. A second survey was done by the same surveyor at the conclusion of the construction, and again showed that there was a five-foot side yard setback along the west property boundary. There was a potential sale of the home, which was not able to conclude as a survey was done in 2013 by a different surveyor that found that there was a one-foot encroachment into the west side yard setback. And the owner, after having gone through all of this and having lost a sale, commissioned yet another survey by Shane Holt, and this survey found that there was only a half-foot encroachment, and sent an email to the applicant, basically outlining what they did to find all of the monuments on surrounding property, which documented clearly the accuracy of his survey, and concluding that, the department concluded that this is the best documented survey and was used to determine that indeed there was only a half-foot or six-inch encroachment into the west side yard setback. And it is apparent that this encroachment has existed since the initial construction in 1993, and it has not been caught through three surveys until Mr. Holt actually performed a correct survey. And in reviewing the seven standards, the property is level, it is not, the lot is level, it meets the required area for the zoning district, it is not adversely impacted by any environmental features, and so there is no physical constraints arising from the lot, it is regularly shaped. So typically, standards one and two are very difficult to meet. However, the three through seven standards are substantially met. The encroachment occurred during the original construction, the encroachment was not discovered, the municipality relied on the as-bilt surveys to certify that this structure was built in a conforming manner, and it was not until the applicant went through a number of surveyors to discover the real story behind the encroachment and then the amount of the encroachment, and it did cost the applicant a sale of property, a sale of the property, because they have moved, they had to fly up here from the south, and I don't remember the community that they moved to. But the encroachment is very minor, the neighbor that would be most affected has written a letter of support, there is at least a 12-foot setback between the two structures, and there would be no adverse impact, there is sufficient area to provide for light, air, open space, and privacy for both dwelling units. And it is the minimum variance that needs to be granted to allow the structure to remain in its current configuration and current location on the lot without requiring extensive remodeling to remove a six-inch encroachment. However, as the first two standards do not appear to be met, the department did have to recommend denial, but on page nine of the packet, do provide three conditions for the board's consideration if the decision is to approve the variance request. The third recommended condition is to obtain a variance or relocate the shed located in the southwest corner of the lot if it is on a permanent foundation. A shed can be, of, a shed up to 150 square feet not on a permanent foundation is allowed to encroach into a side and a rear yard setback. This is located within a rear yard setback, it is 123 square feet, but I do not know if it is on a permanent foundation. If it is a permanent foundation, it either has to be relocated, or a variance sought to remain in its current location. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, will the applicant please come forward and provide your presentation? When you speak into the mic, if you would please give us your name and spell your last name.
My name is Christine Keshverov, and this came as quite a shock to us. We had the house sold, we packed up and moved, our buyers are sitting there, it was a hardship on them also. We bought the home in 2009, July 2009, with two of Charlie Forbes' surveys. Until all this took place, I didn't even know a survey was called an as-bilt. I have learned a lot. We were down, we had gotten, the trucking company moved all our belongings, and we were in Homer waiting for the Tastamina. We went into Kachemac Bay Title, did the final signing, moved over to Saldovia on the Tastamina, and it was later in the week, we got the phone call from our realtor telling us about Fred Wolotka's survey, showing four feet one. And I couldn't even absorb what he was saying, I couldn't even understand. So, had to come back up to Anchorage. I hired a lawyer, who said all I needed then was an administrative variance. So I sat there, and we got the paperwork done. I went in and I met with Dave Whitfield in the planning department. I thought that was it, and I had another shock of my life when he said, "No, this does not qualify for an administrative variance." And I was speechless. So then, after tears or whatever, Dave, Sean, different ones in the department, were so wonderful, and they kind of guided me, and then I went to my sister-in-law's work till midnight, and I got it in the next day, which I think was the last day, you know, to get it here. And got my 50 or 60 copies run at Kinko for everyone, paid the planning department $600, and I went home. Then I had to wait and hope that you would meet tonight, because they said it wasn't a sure thing. So I'm glad you did. It was a blessing that I did find Shane Holt. It wasn't easy to get a surveyor at that last period of all this taking place. I called this one and that one, everyone was busy. But how blessed I was that it was Shane, and the exceptional job that he did do. Do you have any questions? I don't- I don't know what else you want to hear.
Does the board have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Hart, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the question I have is, on page 24, there's a picture of the shed. And I'm curious, is there an actual foundation to the shed or is it simply a woodshed?
No, in fact, I'm shocked that the shed is in question. No, it isn't.
Okay.
I just never even thought about the shed, but, no, it's just one of those that sits on...
Skids.
On what?
Skids.
Skids, excuse me.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
Given the picture and the statement that staff made that if it's less than 150 square feet, which the shed is, and if it's not on a permanent foundation, that the shed may remain in its current location, unless I'm mistaken, it looks apparent that it's not on a permanent foundation. And I guess I'm curious if other board members feel the same, that this doesn't need to be before us for a variance since it meets that standard?
No. It's... Oh, excuse me.
Well, and if I can provide my feedback on that, I concur with your observations. I guess at this point, though, I am not entirely sure of the protocol for removing that, if that's an option. So if other board members can help out, that would be great.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to get resolution on the question before the board now. My comment is of a different sort, so if we can resolve that, then move on.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Cars.
I believe whosoever were to make the motion can decide what recommendations are there. However, I would note that it does, the way it's, recommendation three is written, it's if it is on a permanent foundation. So if it's not on a permanent foundation, I think the requirement for the variance to be moot and not necessary. But I think based on, you know, whoever were so to make the motion, they can strike whatever recommendations they so choose and we can discuss that as a board at that time.
Great, thank you. Mr. Hart, anything else?
I guess where I'm coming from is if it's not on a permanent foundation, which the picture appears to make me believe it's not, I guess I don't see the point in going through the standards, but I would see that as a moot point.
Mr. Hart, I think the variance is for an encroachment of the house, the northwest corner of the house as opposed to the shed.
It's not the shed.
Okay.
It's this portion.
Yeah, the shed was just identified during staff's observation and research.
Okay. My apologies, I had a misunderstanding then.
Okay. Mr. Ron, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, Ms. Kachaverev?
Yes.
Can you speak briefly about your neighbor to the east? It looks like an interesting flag lot. Is that a driveway that that lot, 42B, as it's called out on the subdivision flat map on page three? Is that the driveway for?
That's a private driveway, yes. And the owner has, on the other side of that private driveway, a duplex. And then her home is at the end of the driveway, further up.
So there's, is there a fair amount of traffic along that driveway then?
No.
No? At least access to those houses?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Any other comments?
Ms. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Kachaverev, you'd indicated you had talked to planning staff about an administrative variance, but they had told you that that wasn't an option for you.
That's correct. They had the coding wrong. The lawyer did.
Can you tell me why? And this might be a question for staff. The tolerance for an administrative variance is less than half a foot? Is that...
Yeah, I think it was like, it could only be, it's a percentage of the acreage. And I don't recall what that was because I was numb. Maybe it had to be like five inches.
Go ahead, Ms. O'Brien.
Madam Chair, Mr. Cars, administrative variances are for very small amounts of very, encroachments. They're on a percentage basis. And this half-foot variance exceeded what is allowed to be reviewed administratively and acted upon administratively. It had to come to the zoning board for review and action.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Ms. Dole.
I saw a reference in our packet to the setback of the next lot being greater and I...
I can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw a reference in the packet to the distance of the, or the setback of the neighboring property that's on this adjoining side.
Yes.
And I see a picture in, on page 29 of our packet that shows your property and your lot, which is Lot 4, and then Lot 3. Could you maybe elaborate on any impact that might be suffered by your neighbor or not, the owner of Lot 3 or not?
Oh, his letter is in here. And at that time when he wrote the letter, that was before, what, a day or so, the morning of or something. It wasn't until the next week that the new surveyor got the other survey done. And would you like me to read Krista's letter to you?
No, that's okay.
And there's like, what is it? Between our two homes, I think it's a total of 16 feet. Yes, it's a 16-foot separation between our properties, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll open it up for public hearing. Is there anyone interested in testifying this matter? Please come forward. You can go ahead. If you can state your name, spell your last name, please.
My name is Randy Vanderwood, V and Victor, A-N-D-E-R-W-O-D.
Go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity to come and speak with you today. My wife and I were very interested in purchasing the house. And we were relying on, an owner provided 2004 Asbillys on the property that did show a five-foot to 5.1 foot, five-foot to, five-foot to 5.1 foot offset of the, of the structure from the property line. And as part of the closing documents, though, we did ask for a new Asbillys to be performed. And it was when that was submitted to us that we saw that it was less than a five-foot and closer to a four-foot offset. A friend of mine owns a surveying company, and so now I've got one that says five-foot, one that says four-foot. I said, "Well, let's get a third one and see where it's at." So he and I went out there and found a couple of monuments set up on it and did find that it was closer to the four-foot or near the four-foot than the five-foot. And that was when we looked into it ourselves and went down and talked with the municipality about variances and that sort of thing. And that was at that point that we just didn't feel comfortable moving forward with the closing on the house until this issue got resolved. And I think it is important, thanks for asking, about the separation between the homes, that it is close to 16 feet between, you know, to the neighbor to the west. And the east side of the house has a 10-foot offset to the property line. So although there's less than five-foot on one side, we still have 10 on the other. And there is quite a bit of distance between the homes. I feel very good about the neighbor, you know, supporting this as well, you know, as a potential buyer of the home. And I hope you give it good consideration. And, you know, this, this has got to happen quite often for you, I imagine. You know, that people come to you, we're builders who've built this, especially back in the 80s and 90s when we get a lot of construction on new lots, that to be, I'm happy to, even happier to hear that they came and did an even more thorough survey and found that it was only six inches off, which is very near, you know, like you were talking, you know, an administrative variance that wouldn't even need to come in front of the board here. So I support it and hope you do too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify in this matter? Please state your name, spell your last name.
My name is Thomas Freeman, F-R-E-M-A-N. I am a neighbor that lives across the street. I've been there for 18 years and have known the three families that have lived in that house. And none of this is called to question at any of those 18 years I've been there. There is a good distance between the two houses and it's never been a problem. And so I'm in support of the variance and so.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to testify? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any other comments or questions from the board members? Can I get a positive motion, please? Thank you, Ms. McKay, and seconded by Mr. Cars. Ms. McKay, if you can please state the motion.
I move that we approve a variance from AMC 214004OG2 to allow an existing structure to encroach into the required five-yard, or five-foot side yard setback. Subject two conditions, one and two on page nine of the packet.
Okay. Would you please speak to your motion?
I agree with staff on, on three through seven, that the conditions are substantially met. And it's just one and two that we're in question. And I think that the, that the extraordinary physical circumstance of this particular piece of property has to do with the, the different monuments that exist on the northeast corner that according to the last surveyor were probably the cause of the discrepancies in the, in the first surveys. And that that would take care of the, of the, the first two that would provide that physical
Thank you. Mr. Cars.
Yes. Thank you. I also intend to support the motion and concur with the findings of Board Member McKay regarding Standards One and Two. A couple other comments that might not specifically address Standards One and Two, but still weigh in my decision is that this, this lot is, is a large lot relative to the minimum. So this isn't the instance of a house being built right up to the setbacks and then come in and ask for forgiveness after the fact. This has gone through multiple, this, this lot and house has gone through multiple ownership. And just with this transaction alone, three, three surveys. And while staff has indicated that this does exceed the administrative variance requirements, it is a half a foot, which, which while looked at as a percentage of the whole setback might seem significant, I think, to the, to the eye and from the street, it's pretty, pretty minor. But again, I, as far as the, the findings of fact, I agree with Ms. McKay's comments regarding Standards One and Two, and I intend to support the motion.
Thank you. I agree with the evaluation by Ms. McKay and Mr. Cars. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to their findings? The variance has been unanimously granted. The decision of the board is final. You'll receive a written finding from staff and within 30 days of receiving the finding, if you feel aggrieved by the decision of the board, you can appeal the decision to Superior Court. Thank you for your time and for your travel. Best of luck.
So it's approved?
It is approved.
Thank you. Unless I want to appeal.
Are there any reports? I don't think so. So we're adjourned? Oh, a motion to adjourn, please. Mr. Vig, seconded by Ms. Dole. Thank you, everyone, for adjourned.
I had a, I had a comment, actually. I didn't, I didn't realize we were talking about adjournment here, so apologize. But Ms. O'Brien, I wondered if, you know, I've been on this board for, I don't know, five or so years and there's probably been half a dozen, 10 maybe, situations just like what we had, this third case of discrepancy in, in survey products that people relied on. And I, is it possible for the planning department to do a little bit of research and find out, are we, do our requirements meet a, a minimum set of best practices in this regard? Do we need to tighten things up a bit? It seems like, you know, the public relies on these surveyors to go out and, and conduct this work and they pay them, you know, substantial amounts of money to go do it and then they end up having to come here and in some cases their, their sales have fallen through and the, and the other buyers are gone. It seems to me that it creates a very substantial, significant hardship to, to the public. And I'm not, I just don't know in other communities of acreage size, do we, do we have the right sort of regulations and standards in place for Asbillys surveys?
The municipality doesn't establish standards for surveys. They're assumed to be correct because it's a professional, it's a professional document. It has a seal of a surveyor on it. And the only recourse that people have is to register a complaint with the professional organization that governs surveyors as well as the Better Business Bureau. But the municipality doesn't, isn't setting the standards for surveyors. It's, and they don't regulate surveyors. And the municipality, just like the petitioner before you, we rely on Asbillys surveys and have no way of judging whether they are correct or not. There used to be a survey department in Public Works or a survey division, but it has not been there since the mid-'80s. They were all laid off. So I don't think that the municipality sets the standards for the professionalism of the surveyors.
I understand. I understand that. I understand that. I have an engineering license and I understand that I have the professional obligation to meet standards of care. But I don't know if the expectations of what an ASBILT survey are clearly defined by the municipality. Do they have... Is it clear to... What... When you say an ASBILT is required, does that, is that spelled out anywhere?
Not by the municipality because we don't set the standards for the professional, the profession of surveying.
No, I understand that. Mr. Cars, maybe if you know what I'm driving at here, can you help me out?
Well, yes and no. I know what you're driving at. Can I help you out? No. And I guess I'd have to go back and look at Title 21. I think there are requirements. Who checks those is, you know, the tough part. And what the recourse for people when there's an error are, you know, the recourse, if it goes from a lot that just gets built and then an incorrect ASBILT is done, you know, there's a direct line of liability. And I think I, knowing what I know about ASBILT surveys, I might disagree with you that they're paid a lot of money to do the ASBILTS. And I think that's part of the problem right there.
Well, yeah. I'm sure the public views it as a lot of money when they're attempting to sell their home.
Sure, yeah. I'd have to go back and look and see what those requirements are. And we could discuss that maybe at the next meeting. But it's, that's a tough one. I don't have an answer for you.
Mr. Vig, my interpretation of your question was different than Ms. O'Brien's response. I see it as two-part. One being an issue associated with the professionalism of the surveyor itself. And the other part being a requirement for what exactly is entailed by the ASBILT survey. What should be shown? What steps should be incurred? Is that spelled out anywhere? So, I think there's room for discussion on both topics, but we need to respect that we're maybe talking about different things.
Absolutely. That's...
I have seen a place where requirements are spelled out. And it's usually in commercial transactions where there's an extended title insurance policy being purchased. And in order to remove a survey exception, title company requires an approved ALTA survey. And that spells out certain requirements for the survey. But that is something that's not coming from the municipality.
There are requirements for plaits. And what's left of the survey department, which is three people, they do verify the correctness of plaits. I do know that some survey companies are required to do ALTA surveys that you were talking about. And they are different from the standard survey, ASBILT survey that is required by Building Safety to show where the structures are on the lot in relation to the platted, the platted boundaries of the lot. But I don't know, I have not seen in Title 21 specifics of what is on an ASBILT or how it's drawn. I do know that on a plat, you have to show the proposed lot boundaries and any structures that may exist on the land that you are plating in relation to your new lot lines. But I haven't seen any written requirements for an ASBILT survey unless they're in the Design Criteria Manual, which I'm not that familiar with. I'm more familiar with the Title 21 and the plating requirements.
They're on the, they're on the handout that talks about what it takes to get a certificate of occupancy. There, it says, you know, you have to show the distance to the lot line to two decimal places. And there are some requirements there for getting a certificate of occupancy, but that's the only place I've seen it.
That's a CO, but I don't know if there's... My understanding, because I was, I remember when they instituted the requirement to have an ASBILT at the footing and foundation. So, if there's a problem at that point, you don't have the entire structure. You can correct any errors. And I don't know if they still do that now. And if they have that same requirement for a footing and foundation ASBILT like you were just describing, I mean, it seems a little bit after the fact when it's a CO, the structure's already there. And that was the intention for getting an ASBILT survey at the footing and foundation stage. And I honestly don't know if they still do that.
Board Member McKay, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn here, but it sounds like a senior thesis project, right, for a student to do a root cause analysis of survey problems in municipality and perhaps germinate a solution that way.
All right. Mr. Hart, did you have anything? That's okay.
Didn't mean to take you off into the weeds, sir.
No, that's good. Mr. Hart, yeah, I had requests to speak, anything?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have anything related to this discussion at this point in time. I just wanted to sincerely apologize to the board for being 10 minutes late. I had a work obligation that I couldn't, couldn't run away from. And my apologies for the confusion. It's been a long, long day, a long couple of weeks. And obviously, I'm not all there. So, my apologies.
Thank you. Can we try this again? Motion to adjourn, please. Mr. Ron, seconded by Mr. Cars. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.